Oh yea, oh yea, oh yea. Silence is commanded by the Honor of Commission. All those having business, draw near.
Good morning and thank you. You may be seated. I've asked you to be seated at this time as we prepare ourselves for our meeting this November 7th. And I'm gonna ask you to, please ma'am, please sir, check all your cell phones, all your communicating devices because Silence is commanded and I hate for the deputy have to take it to our bed and breakfast because it costs you to get it back out for Monday. Alright? So please ma'am, please sir, check to make sure you're in compliance. We have with us today, and Father, I'm not gonna even try to pronounce your last name.
Oh, sir.
I'm gonna let you say it because I, from my years, 33 years as a teacher, one of the things I did, I did not one of the things I did, I did not like is not having kids I couldn't pronounce their names. I told them to stop having their parents throw coins up against the wall and coming up with a name. Right? So I don't like upsetting folks' names. So I see this part, Father Frank, I can say. And I'm going to stay with that. But he comes to us, he's the headmaster at Benedict Military School. All right? And so I'm going to invite you to the podium and you can lead us in your inspiration. And then when you get ready for the invocation, if you will, let us know that we all can stand and be in compliance with you. All right?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for having me.
Thank you.
My greetings to the commissioners and our honorees this morning. We take from our reading from the psalmist. "I thank you, Lord, with all my heart. You've heard the words of my mouth. In the presence of the angels, I will bless you; I will adore before your holy temple. I thank you for your faithfulness and love, which excel all we ever knew of you. On the day I called, you answered; you increase the strength of my soul. All our kings will thank you when they hear the words of your mouth. They will sing of the Lord's ways; how great is the glory of the Lord! The Lord is high, yet he looks on the lowly, and the haddish he knows from afar. Though I walk in the midst of affliction, you give me life and frustrate my foes. You stretch out your hand and save me; your hand will do all things for me. Your love, O Lord, is eternal; discard not the work of your hands." Reflecting on our psalmist. I think of the month of November as a month of Thanksgiving. As a nation, we observe Veterans Day and end the month with Thanksgiving itself. We are a people who are called to never be full of ourselves, to always remember that there are true strengths. And the one strength that we are most called to remember is that of our Lord. This Lord of ours looks on the lowly and the haddish he knows from afar. Only the self-satisfied realize only when it is too late that the enemy is at the gates. Is this the realization of the frailty of things that our daily call is to vigilance? A call that begs us to heed? The call that reminds us that maybe our greatest strength lies in the understanding of our own limits and that there is a God above who isn't always there to lend a hand even when we seem most overwhelmed? As a people, we give thanks for secure borders while called to be mindful of the needs of the many, both within and beyond those borders. Any chance that we could be called to lend a hand and to serve as an extension of the Almighty? Does this month of Thanksgiving call us to recall who we are within this creation? Does it call us beyond the borders of ourselves to be mindful of the worlds beyond our own? Do the needs of those beyond us urge us to think of our own call as a service and see it as our way of giving thanks? That call to service assumes so many faces and asks so many questions throughout our times. Maybe the times allow us to see any one of those faces in greater clarity. Was the Greatest Generation a one-off? Was it a moment that stands as a model for all times? Is anyone's generation ever excused from that call to service? Each generation can serve as the Greatest Generation. And if called to serve, is that our way of saying thanks? Thanks for our todays, our hope for tomorrow, and tomorrow, and tomorrow? Is this call for Thanksgiving a settling within us? A call that offers deep satisfaction to any one of us for knowing our place in this place? That settled place came from the understanding that our reaching out was worth it and brought with it an affirming nod from a God of love who is thankful to us for caring for one of his own. And who sees our reaching out? Who is there to reward us for that outreach? Is it something that is only to God? Or is simply God enough? Is that quiet settling within us, reward in itself? Is that peace that the world cannot give? These days of Thanksgiving covers a spectrum of our doings and invites us to remember those who reached out for us and we for them when it was our turn. Are we called to repay that favor by doing the same for others? Whether anyone sees it or not is irrelevant to a God who invites us to serve as an extension of him, who has his own way of saying thanks to us. Yes, it is our peace that the world cannot give, especially during this month when we offer thanks for so many who allow us to enjoy our todays and our hope for tomorrow. Does that call for thanks also caution us to be vigilant so that we can be there for others and at their service? Thank you for having me.
All right. Will you pray for us?
Let us now pray. Father, we give thanks for the many who have served you through this community, for this county, and for the many good sacrifices that they have offered. We give thanks for the many whom they served, and may their good support be of satisfaction to you. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Father Frank, I want to thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule to come and to be with us today. We cannot pay you, but we offer this token of our appreciation for you being here and for you bringing words of inspiration and invocation. If you turn around and face that clock and that little young man right there with the camera. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Father.
All right. Roll call.
Chester A. Ellis, Chairman.
Present.
Bobby Lockett, District Three, Vice Chairman.
Present.
Melinda Scott Hodge, District Two, Chairman for a temp.
Present.
Anthony Way Noah, District One. Patrick K. Farrell, District Four.
Here.
Tanya Milton, District Five.
Present.
Aaron Whitley, District Six.
Here.
Dean Kickley, District Seven.
Here.
Marsha Buford, District Eight.
Present.
At this time, we're going to call on Commissioner Milton, who will introduce our youth commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are excited today to have Ms. Jada Sams, who is a senior at Johnson High School, and she is bidding to be in elementary, going into elementary education, but she's got a little journalism in her. So we're going to talk, we're going to have a conversation about her doing some writing for the Savannah Tribune. And then we have Mr. Carson Beeson. Carson is a sophomore at Savannah Christian, and he is interested in math, loves math, to the point where he's already positioned himself to be an engineer. So we're excited to have them here today, and we want you to be a part of the meeting, listen, learn, ask questions, and participate. Thank you.
Thank you so much and welcome for being here. And please ma'am, please sir, feel free to join in with us as we get ready to go through these proceedings. Any questions you may have or anything that comes to your mind, if you just raise your hand. If I don't see you, one of the commissioners will see you and will have you answer your questions, okay? Thank you again for being here. At this time, let me call on Commissioner Whitley, who shall do the proclamation for our veteran.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, everybody. All right. Whereas to be named veteran, well, first of all, should I ask someone to come up?
Yeah.
Yeah. Chief Master Sergeant Curry, come on up. Yes, sir. Whereas to be named Veteran of the Year for Chatham County is a distinguished honor bestowed by the entire membership of the Veterans Council of Chatham County, which is comprised of thirty military veteran organizations and is worthy of recognition on Veterans Day, November eleventh, when America pauses to commemorate all those who have served in military uniform to defend our nation and preserve its liberty. Samuel L. Curry, Chief Master Sergeant from the United States Air Force, retired. And whereas Samuel L. Curry, a native of Brunswick, Georgia, moved to Savannah, Georgia at the age of two and was a student of the Savannah-Chatham Public School System. And whereas, following four years of apprenticeship at Delta Metals, he attained the position of Sheet Metal Journeyman and became a member of United Sheet Metal Workers of America, Local twenty-seven and Local eighty-five. And whereas, he joined the United States Air Force and began training as an aircraft loadmaster and was assigned to Travis Air Force Base in California, Twenty-Second Military Airlift Squadron, flying the C-5 Alpha aircraft. And following four years of active duty, he joined the Georgia Air National Guard, One Hundred and Sixty-Fifth Airlift Group as a C-130 Echo. I'm going military, I'm like Echo Hotel. E-H-H-two loadmaster. I want to make sure our civilians understand. Instructor and evaluator, where he accumulated eleven thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine point two flying hours. And whereas Samuel L. Curry was deployed on numerous operations, including Bosnia, Rwanda, Desert Shield, Panama, Grenada, Iraq, Afghanistan, Horn of Africa, Vietnam, and many humanitarian missions in the United States and around the world. And whereas, after more than thirty-eight years, he retired from the military and civilian service as a Chief Master Sergeant, E-nine Superintendent of Load Master Section, and joined the National Museum of the Mighty Eighth Air Force. And whereas, he joined American Legion Post One Thirty-five and held Chairs of Finance Officer, Second Vice Commander, First Vice Commander, and Senior Vice Commander. He became a member of Post One Thirty-five, where he has served as commander for two years and currently holds a position as Finance Officer. Now therefore, I, Aaron Whitley, on behalf of Chairman Chester Ellis, on behalf of Chatham County Board of Commissioners, do hereby salute Samuel L. Curry, Chief Master Sergeant, United States Air Force, as Veteran of the Year, 2025-26, and extend our commendations for his dedication and commitment to his community, state, and nation, as well as the veterans and citizens of Chatham County. And we share this proud moment with his wife of fifty-two years, Ms. Dolores H. Curry, and their family. Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The mic is yours. The mic is yours and you won't say anything.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for this. I will definitely put this in a place of honor in my house. And I thank all of you for supporting the veterans of our community. With us being a military community, we have a lot of veterans, veterans in need. And that's your job now as a Chatham County, to assist and help those veterans. And I hope that we can work with you and assist you in any way needed to help these veterans who are really in big need.
Well, thank you so much. And it gives me a great pleasure to represent Chatham County. I can say to you, I just returned back from a trip to California where I was talking to the military brass and Pentagon about some things that we're going to do here for veterans and for the active servicemen who are listed. And so those things will be coming. And we, thank you so much for your service and thank you for being here with us today. If you turn around and face that young man.
Yes, sir.
Right behind you. Is, hold on a minute, Will. Is that his wife right there? Come on, stand with him.
Hello, Mrs. Curry.
Yeah. Come on, stand with him.
When veterans serve, families serve with them.
Thank you all. Now let me have the Parade Grand Marshal to come to the podium. The County of Chatham, Georgia, proclamation. Whereas to be named the Grand Marshal of the Veterans Day Parade in Savannah is a special honor because November eleventh is when America paused to commemorate those who have served in uniform to defend our nation and preserve its liberty. We now salute Dr. Fay Roslin Prescott as the 2025 Veterans Day Parade Grand Marshal. And whereas Dr. Prescott is the founder and CEO of My Veterans Place Savannah, Inc., a five oh one C-three nonprofit organization established in 2021 with a mission to enable, ensure that no veteran or military family goes to bed hungry or unsupported. And whereas a proud U.S. Navy veteran, military spouse, and lifelong member of the military community, Dr. Prescott's journey is rooted in the service, compassion, and faith inspired during the COVID-19 pandemic to live her true purpose. She turned her lifelong passion for helping others into a movement of hope and empowerment for those who have sacrificed for our nation. And whereas through My Veterans Place Savannah, she led programs that provide vital support such as housing assistance, mental health resources, life skill training, community-built activities for veterans and their families, and her leadership has earned widespread recognition, including the President's Lifelong Achievement Award. Now therefore, I, Chester Ellis, Chairman, on behalf of the Chatham County Board of Commissioners, do hereby salute Dr. Fay Roslin Prescott as Parade Grand Marshal of the 2025 Veterans Day Parade and extend sincere appreciation for the dedication and service you provided to your community, state, and nation, in and out of uniform. Applaud her for offering of resources that restores dignity and stability and living for lives for her workers that enable the belief that we are stronger together, fostering unity, healing, and purpose among those who have served. And witness whereof, I am here to set my hands and call the Seal of Chatham County, Georgia, to be affixed the seventh day of November, 2025. The mic is yours.
Thank you. I'm deeply honored to be able to lead the Seventy-Ninth Veterans Day Parade as the first African-American in seventy-nine years. I do not take this lightly, but it is not all about me. It is about the other women veterans who are out there, who will be joining me in that parade as we stand solidarity and march down the streets of Savannah, Georgia.
Thank you so much for, and I'm so happy that they honored you by naming you the Grand Marshal. And I'm so happy that we'll be in the parade too, to salute you and to show your dedication. So now if you would turn around and, is that your husband?
It is.
And let him join your side, because as Commissioner Whitley says, when one serve, the family serve. Y'all face that young man with the camera. Again, thank you so much. I don't think you thought I was going to let you get away without saying anything, did you? He knew who I, no, he knew who I'm talking about. Right there behind you. You didn't think I was going to let you get out of here without saying something? Uh-huh. I know.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you, guys. This is my sixth and
This is my sixth and final year running the Veterans Council. It has been an honor to work with each and every one of you. It has been an honor to represent Chatham County and its veterans. I thank you, guys, for your support over these past six years. I couldn't have done it without you as well. There are two people that I would like to introduce to you on top of the two very special people that we just honored, though. As everybody knows, um, inflation is kicking everybody's butt right now, and it has not spared our nonprofits as well. So this year, for the first time ever, we actually have a presenting sponsor helping us put Veterans Day together. So with me today is Ms. Luella Sanders, representing Vice Dark Credit Union, who is our presenting sponsor of the parade this year. Also, off to the side, I have my Vice Chairman, Mr. Harry Gardner, who is the Chairman-elect to, uh, represent the Veterans Council next year. I'm hoping that he is gonna take everything that I've built and take it to an even higher level. I will gladly support him and I hope he does much better than I did.
Well, thank you all so much for what you do and how you do it, and we enjoy it. Yes, sir.
I just want to thank Joe, uh, for all of his service. He's, he, all you have to say is veteran, and he's pretty much shows up at whatever occasion that might be. And I want to thank his wife for putting up with Joe going to every one of those. They are both veterans and, uh, they're both wonderful people, and Joe, you did outstanding job, buddy.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I'm coming.
Yeah, I didn't know this was gonna be your, your last time up here in this role, so I'm, I'm sad to see you go, but I know we're in capable hands. Um, but thank you, thank you, thank you. You know, you serve in a way that a lot of people don't understand, you know? You're hearing all the bad stories in a lot of cases. You're hearing all the challenges that our veterans are facing through all the member organizations. And I know you personally, um, you have compassion, so I know you probably shoulder some of that. And so I want to thank you and your family for your service, sir, your continued service. Um, and I don't know, ma'am, maybe, who knows what's next on the horizon, but I'm excited to see what's next for Mr. Higgins.
I'm always gonna be here supporting you one way or another, Commissioner.
Thank you for your service, sir.
Thank you very much for your service, sir, and we also want to just send our regards out to, uh, Mr. Doug Andrews, who used to be here with this gathering, and, uh, just give him our regards and tell him we've missed him and wish him the best in his retirement.
Will do, Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Joe, for what you do.
Thank you.
And I know you're gonna stay involved.
I am.
All right? Thank you so much. We don't have any chairman's items or commission items, don't have any table items. We go to items for individual action. To request board approval of the following budget amendments and transfers fiscal year twenty twenty-five, appropriated fund balance and transfers funds to department's budget as shown in Attachment One for A, Emergency Communications, forty thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars. B, the Sewer Fund, eighteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. Approved interdepartmental budget transfer as shown in Attachment One for the General Fund, the E-nine-one-one Fund, the Special Service District Fund, and the Sewer Fund. And the Inmate Welfare Fund, increased revenues and expenditures, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Fiscal year twenty twenty-six, One, in the Multiple Grant Fund, A, increased revenues and expenditures, fifty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for the Georgia Family Connection Partnership Grant. B, increased revenue and expenditures, sixty-four thousand, one hundred and forty dollars for the Governor's Office of Highway Safety Grant. Is there a motion?
Second.
Proper motion and second that we approve the request. Are you ready for the question? Please cast your votes. Okay. Transmittal of fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, first quarter financial report for information, Ms. Kramer.
I'll ask our Finance Director, Amy Davis, to come forward.
All right.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. This is our first quarter financial report, which tends to be a little bit dull because we haven't gotten our revenues, but we're spending like mad. As usual, I should say, as usual. So as of the end of September, uh, the General Fund had twenty-nine point one million in revenues and sixty-two point, uh, sixty-two million in expenditures. However, I would like to give a shout out to our Tax Commissioner because in October and November, we collected about sixty million in taxes. So it's a little bit earlier than what we normally see. In the Special Service District, uh, we had six million in revenues and eleven point five million in expenditures. And on our next page, just gives you a breakdown of each of those revenue sources. As you can see, um, twenty-one point six million of the twenty-nine million is in our taxes. And our sales tax collections for the quarter were thirty-one point four million. And year, uh, sorry, inception to date on sales tax is five hundred and sixty point five million. And we did get approved for SPOLOST eight, so, uh, we will continue on this next year. Our lost collections were five point eight million and year-to-date, obviously, eight, five point eight million. We had six hundred and eighteen million in cash and investments. Um, two hundred and thirty-five point three million of that was in the General Fund. Cash on hand was nineteen point four million. And in our Georgia Fund One account, which is the State Pool account, we had sixty-seven point three million. And in other funds, uh, the confiscation funds, uh, has collected two hundred and forty-six thousand their year-to-date. Um, in the Risk Management Fund, they have spent thirty point nine percent. Most of that is due to, um, liability contracts being paid for upfront. Parking Garage Fund, revenues exceeded expenditures eighty-four thousand, which doesn't sound like a lot, but just a couple of years ago, we were in red, the red in this fund, so that's good news. And in the Sewer Fund, uh, we are still showing a deficit of a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. And as mentioned, it's not on the slideshow here, but as mentioned in pre-meeting, uh, we got our actuarial report done this last week, and we are fully funded in both the OPEB Fund and our Pension Fund, which is a huge accomplishment, not, especially in OPEB, because not many people fund their other post-employment benefits. And that's all I have. Y'all have any questions?
All right, questions? Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, I'm in the school council at my high school, and my principal informed us when East SPOLOST passed. However, I never really understood it. So if anyone could give me clarity as to why, what SPOLOST is and why we're so excited that it got passed, that would be great.
All right, um, I'll take, I'll take the first stab at it.
I'll take next.
All right. Uh, East SPOLOST is Educational Special Service Tax, all right? That's just for the school board. They set a goal, and then they go to the voters to ask them to vote. And I think that, um, what they asked the voters to do with East SPOLOST is seven hundred million dollars, so they can collect seven hundred million dollars in the next five years. Those monies go to, uh, capital projects that, uh, the school board has listed, all right? Uh, such as building new schools, uh, AVAC systems, uh, buses, uh, all those that are capital projects. So that's what East SPOLOST is. But it's just for the school board, all right? Now SPOLOST, which has just passed, is the Special Service District, and this is the fifth penny, all right? And it's been in now since, what, eighty-nine? It's since eighty-five, all right? It's the sixth penny, all right? That, that, um, that we spend, and what we do is, each one of the municipalities gives the commissioner a list of road projects and capital projects that they need to spend the money for, okay? And then we put that in a referendum and give it to the voters who approved it this Tuesday. Uh, that too is at seven hundred million dollars. Now the difference between East SPOLOST and SPOLOST is that once the school reaches seven hundred million dollars, they have to stop. Okay, they can't collect no more monies. Different from the county commission and the municipalities, we collect up to seven hundred million dollars, and we have disbursement as to how that money is dispersed among the, uh, the county, the largest municipality, which is the city of Savannah, and then the other municipalities, okay? Once we reach that goal of the seven hundred million dollars, then it becomes, uh, uh, we can continue to, to collect monies up to six years, okay? And those monies can also be used for special projects and things that we have identified here as a board, right? Each commissioner went out to their particular district, talked to their constituents about what road need to be fixed, what other improvements we need to be fixed. Uh, if you have the time, I would invite you to go out now to Stell Park, if you live close to Stell Park, because we did a great, um, um, use of the SPOLOST money there, okay? Also, uh, just the day before yesterday, we did, uh, an, um, a revamping of the, uh, community park at, at, um, at Lamarville, okay? If you're going to the airport right now, over on the left-hand side, you see the new EOC building, which is Emerging Operations Center, uh, which we will use for all emergencies, uh, at present time. EOC operates out the building, uh, the basement of this building, as well as the building out on, um, Carl Griffin Drive. But we find now that we need to build a, a new and bigger one. So then there also, uh, on the, on the list of improvements for like, uh, Airway Avenue, Pooler Parkway, uh, Benton Boulevard, Little Neck Road, Quacko Road. Am I, anybody want to add any in? Go.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just, to make it very simple. It's SPOLOST monies throughout the years has been the seed money. We would not have Pooler Parkway, Deloach Parkway, Veterans Parkway, Chatham Parkway, Benton Boulevard. We wouldn't have the, most things that you think of, that you've seen built in your lifetime, was built because of SPOLOST. Without that, it would, basically, the seed money would have to come from just the homeowners and property owners in Chatham County. But the sales tax money is utilized to actually build these projects that we need. While you hear everybody, people complaining, rightly so, taxes are too high. They are, but without SPOLOST, they don't even begin to know what either high is or very low services, because it would give one way or another. We would either, people that talk about flooding right now, yeah, it's, it's terrible to flood, but they don't even know what a flood is without SPOLOST. Without that, we wouldn't have flood pumps around, the canals wouldn't be, uh, as wide as they are. I mean, it's been the seed money that has really kept the major infrastructure throughout the whole county and each of its cities running. And the beauty of the sales tax is forty percent is paid for by people living outside of Chatham County. Whereas a hundred percent of the sales tax from our residents comes, I mean, not sales tax, property tax comes from our residents living here. So it's, uh, very good to be able to utilize some monies from people that, all these visitors that we love to have here in Savannah, and all of the people that live outside of our county, but work here and utilize our roads and jam the roads getting in and out of here. It's great to get a little money from them to help build the wider roads and, um, help out a little bit in Chatham County. So it's a, it's a truly great thing that we are able to utilize that here in Chatham County.
Cool. So did that answer your question, Dana?
All right, now, to, to cap things off, right now we are at the end of the closing of SPOLOST seven, all right? That will last until September thirtieth of twenty twenty-six, all right? Then the SPOLOST that we just voted in, SPOLOST eight, will begin October first, all right? And run for six years, which will take us into the thirties. So there are projects that you're going to see come up, uh, in meetings, uh, days to come. Like for instance, um, there are, uh, gymnasiums that are part of the upcoming SPOLOST eight, SPOLOST seven and SPOLOST eight. There's a amphitheater coming that's a part of SPOLOST seven and SPOLOST eight. There are road improvements that are there, all right, um, that are coming. So, uh, as I speak to you now, I want to give a shout out to all of the voters of Chatham County, who saw the need for us to keep the SPOLOST in place and to know that what it does is the SPOLOST actually keeps our taxes down lower, all right? Because it gives the county commission, uh, operating capital in which we can take care of the drainage problems, and that's one of the top items on the SPOLOST, is drainage, all right? Take care of the road projects, because we know that especially the west side is growing. And so there are new roads and bridges and things that we are having in place. And so, um, that's what takes us through the East SPOLOST and the SPOLOST. Anybody else? Did we get all your que, did we get it? Okay, thank you so much. Yeah, and I'm glad that, I'm glad that you made sure that, you know, you can go back and, and speak to, from your notes, you can speak to. And if, if ever you need for one of us to come and to talk to your, um, school counselors or, or either your, um, student organization, all right? About what county government does and what SPOLOST and East SPOLOST and those do, feel free to just let us know, all right? Thank you, ma'am. At this time, we'll call on Dr. Harper, who should give us an update on animal control.
All right, thank you, guys, for letting me, Commissioners.
Sure.
For allowing me to come in and do another update today. We're gonna move from talking about taxes and talking about that kind of stuff, and we're gonna talk about dogs and cats. Although I do want to say, I went out to Scottsdale Park. That is amazing. That's really cool. So anyway, my kids love to play basketball out there, so. It's cool. So anyway, so let's talk about animal services. Um, what I'm, what I'm gonna go through is, for the first time since I've been there, we are pretty much fully staffed.
Good.
We have a new officer starting next week. Then with all animal care assistants are all there, so we've got the people there. So we're gonna start looking into kind of expanding our hours. We'll work on that to kind of get a little bit more hours, and we'll talk with lending staff and kind of see what's gonna work best for us. But we're fully staffed. Um, I'll give you some stats from just August to October this year. Um, looking at intakes, and as you can see, we're a little bit down from May and July, which is kind of typical because we see a little bit of decrease as school starts back, as we're not. As, as, you know, school starts back, we're not seeing as many intakes. Um, the other thing with cats, we're, you know, we're also not doing as, as many impounds because we're not getting as many calls for impounds as we had in the past. Um, unfortunately, one of those things that we do see in that August, that August, October, when school starts back, is adoptions kind of go down. Um, but our live release rate, because our, because our intakes are going down too, our live release rate stayed about seventy-three percent. Our cats kind of have gone up just because we haven't been taking in as many cats. Um, rescue partners, we're still, we have really strong relationships with a lot of these rescues. Renegade Pauls is still kind of the top one on there with their dogs transferred out. They took out seventy-four dogs over the last three months. They're kind of the big one. Gurr is another one that we use a lot. We actually did a lot of Otto County stuff with Camden County and the Battle Buddies with some dogs, some puppies that came in. And then Red Clay is kind of our cat person. She, you know, is a veterinarian in town that started that rescue, and she takes a lot of our kittens and cats that end up at the shelter. Let's talk about our dog, our animal services actual, like, officers that are going out. We're still seeing tons of calls for dog at large. It, it kind of get, like I said, it goes down a little bit later, you know, as we get into colder weather, because people aren't out as much. I say colder weather, it's not really cold, but I think when people are busy going to sporting events and everything else, and they aren't really home in the afternoons, we see a decrease in those dog at large. We're still seeing the same amount. I didn't put it in this, as we, if you remember, the last one was, most of our dog at large become unfounded when we go out, because by the time we get there, they're not there anymore. So it's still right, you know, hovering around that seventy, eighty percent of the time. Um, follow-ups are kind of high welfare, checks are still. Um, follow-ups are kind of high welfare, checks are still kind of elevated. And, you know, with, it's kind of amazing, we've had five officers for the last, for these three months. At one point, we had three officers, but we're still, we're still running, you know, five hundred calls a month. So they've been kind of busting it out there to, you know, get these calls done. Um, so, you know, we've got a, now that we've got more, we'll be able to run more calls, or at least not be stressed out about calls. Um, one of the big things we do in the fall is go to lots of events. You know, we talked about Wagway. Wagway is a big event downtown Savannah during October where Renegade goes through there and they have, they set up booths. They have dogs in costumes, and we had a booth there. You can actually see in that top picture, some of our adoptable animals wearing, you know, tiger costume and a, I think that was a bumblebee on the other one. Um, we do that every year. The other big thing that we do is Yappy Hour at Starlin Yard. Every month, the third Thursday, third Wednesday of the month, they have a lot of the rescue groups come in and set up booths. We set up a booth kind of in the back there and have, you know, volunteers going there, eat pizzas and stuff, and kind of just hang out and, you know, get involved with the community. Um, one of the things we did this past October was we went to, um, Fenchess. It's a restaurant over off, like, as you go, I think it's in Thunderbolt. Um, they had a blood drive out there, and we actually had some rescues out there that, you know, had some dogs out there. I think we got a couple of adoptions from those dogs. Um, our volunteers wear these yellow shirts, and they're a big part of this. We couldn't do these events that we do without the volunteers. Um, they come in, they actually help with the dogs at the shelter, but they're a big component of the, of the, um, adoption events. We actually went to the, um, Ghost Pirates game on Wednesday night. They were out there, so I don't know if we got adoptions from those, but they had fun with that, too. And then the other thing that we do, which has kind of helped, which has benefited us a little bit, is Wag Fest. Every fall, usually twice a year, the Savannah A K C has a, has an event across the street from the shelter where we go out. The A K C is what provided our trailer, I didn't take a picture that I should have, but our evacuation trailer that we have, they set up like evacuation shelters and temporary shelters, was sponsored by the A K C, and they, we have that trailer that's full of cages and a generator and everything else that we need to set up, you know, any kind of shelters that we have if we have emergency events. Anyway, that's all I had.
Right, questions? All right, question? Commissioner Hodge?
Thank you, Chairman. So with, with the call logs and the other calls?
Yes.
I do have a question about protocol for animals that do not, um, the non-canine, the non-feline animals. Like, um, I'm sure you deal with raccoon calls, coyote calls, fox. Saw wild boar.
Yeah, we pushed, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was saying saw a wild boar recently, um, who appears to be a pet by the way that he behaves out on the Montgomery Street area near the old fairgrounds.
Okay.
So how, what's the protocol for these calls?
For wild animals, we, D N R handles those typically, so we refer those to D N R. If it's something like the boar that may be a pot-bellied pig, I don't know, you know, we, I think we've got, we've actually been out, I think they were actually trying to catch that pot-bellied pig.
Oh.
Because there was one out there, and there was one in Arty, I think, that they were, were going out for.
Okay.
But with most of the wildlife, all the wildlife, occasionally, like, if we have a snake in the house that, you know, that's, we have, one of our officers is kind of trained and handles, handles snakes. He'll go out and help citizens with that if he's on, on shift.
Okay.
But with most of the wildlife, we recommend using either wildlife handlers that are in the, in the, you know, some of the, um, extermination companies can go out and help. But with reckons, in, in particular, we use the D N R. They'll go out, they, you know, we live in their environment, so it's kind of hard to, you know, we can help to kind of mitigate some of those things. And if it involve, if there involves a bite or any kind of animal attack, then we go out and we'll take care of it. We actually had recently, this past month, we had a raccoon that attacked a dog that ended up testing positive for rabies. So, you know, in those cases, we go out, but in just the general, like, nuisance cases, it's better for D N R to handle that, because they're more prepared for that.
So if the resident calls animal control, because that's generally how their mind processes things, you all do the referral out?
Correct. We will either give them the number to call D N R, we have that number, we, I think it's listed on our website.
Okay.
But they can, they'll call D N R, and then we kind of, we, we also kind of assess the situation, too, to see if it's something that's maybe not listening to the wildlife issue. Like, if it is like a raccoon issue, we can kind of come out like, hey, you've got stray cats running around that people are feeding inappropriately, so we can deal with it that way.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to accept the action calendar in its entirety?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Proper motion is second, that the action calendar be accepted in its entirety. Are you ready for the question? Please cast your votes. All right. First reader, and after I read this into the record, if there's anyone who want to make comments, please come up to Ms. Kramer, if there's a pad, uh, that you can sign up in order to speak in this, this public comments. Amend, amendment to chapter twelve, article four, section twelve point, twelve dash four zero one, entitled Bike Path to Incorporated Propel, Propel Vehicles to Use Multi-Purpose Lane of the Chatham County Code, all right? Uh, it is a first reader, and it will be a second reader, but in this time, uh, a first reader, we can have public comments. As soon as he signed up, just let him come onto the mic. Take your time. And the mic is yours.
Can we have one speaker, Mr. Breslin?
Okay.
Patrick Breslin of Skidaway Island.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Sure.
Quite frankly surprised. Um, I brought a, a written statement that I'll leave behind for.
All right, just give it to Janice right there. Thank you.
And, uh, reading from, uh, my memory, all I wanted to do was to commend the commission for looking at the possibility of restricting access to bicycle paths around the county. I think in a general sense, um, as new electronic devices such as scooters become more prevalent, um, they present a hazard to those who are particularly walking on these bicycle paths, bicyclists as well. But, uh, as a pedestrian, if a little child with good intentions comes barreling toward me, it's a, it's an issue. I realize this, um, proposal applies to the entire county, but my particular concern is where I live in Skidaway Island, and the Green Island Road path is about to be built. Um, because Skidaway is a big golf cart community, we've been concerned about safety on this path in the context of golf carts. Um, the, the new path would be so close to Green Island Road, which is a high-speed road, we're concerned about bad interactions between golf cart drivers and pedestrians, particularly children. If this is passed, then it would apply to the Green Island Road path, which would really, really reduce our concerns about the path, be a, a major alleviation to our concerns. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Um, I'm sorry, I forgot one thing, it's on my written statement. As written, the proposal would allow e-bikes going less than twenty miles per hour. And I'm sympathetic to the idea that they're relatively slow bikes, but they're still fast, and it would be difficult to enforce it, uh, without a speedometer around. Uh, seems to me that allowing only motorized devices for the disabled would be the, the best way to go on this. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you so much, and I can honestly say to you that just when we were out at, um, when we were out at the landings with the association, Wednesday, was that Wednesday? All right, we are addressing some of the same things, all right, and talking on the same area. So this is a first reader, but I, I'd imagine that, uh, based upon what's going on with the attorneys and all the legal hurdles that we have, uh, it's going to be a while before anything comes to pass with this. Uh, because, uh, there are, as I said in the pre-meeting, this is a fifteen thousand jigsaw piece, jigsaw puzzle, and it's spread all over the table, and nothing seemed to match, and then everything seemed to match, and then nothing else will go together. So, uh, we're going to be here for a while, but thank you for your comments, and we'll move forward, all right? Okay, yes, sir?
Do things such as, uh, A T Vs and gas-propelled golf carts would be incorporated into this?
That's, that's what, that's what the attorney was saying this morning, all right? That's because of the influx, you know, including what, what do you call that? That one that just live up off the ground? The, the hoverboard, all right? And we're going to have to look at all those things, because if I'm walking, all right? And I'm walking at two miles an hour, and you come along on whether it's a motorized scooter or whether it's a golf cart or something, you know, uh, there is a challenge for that, all right? And everybody can't move out the way, because some of us don't move as fast as we used to move. We don't want to admit it, all right? But, yeah, so there will be, um, when all this comes to bear, all right? Legal will have to take a look at in all phases of. And one of the things I can tell you that we're going, we're going to have to do is bring into compliance and, and bring into where they're in, et cetera, as to what the federal law says, the state law says, and what the county law, county ordinance will say. All they have to get on the same page, all right? Because if you don't, you're going to wind up in a multitude of lawsuits, uh, going forward. Yes, sir?
Uh, just for the sake of public comment, all right, and discussion, um, I think it might be time for us as a city or county, as we see the growth that we're experiencing, to try to be proactive on, um, contributing to the discussion about bike lanes. I know as we go to some of these larger cities and you see the motorized vehicles that we're talking about, they're authorized generally on the bike lanes, and the sidewalks are reserved for those who are walking. Um, so, you know, maybe something that we can consider long-term. And to, uh, Youth Commissioner Sam's, you know, if we're talking about building more roadways now or expanding roadways and putting in bike lanes, that's a cost that if we don't use Splos to do it, we would have to use property taxes to fund it. So I just want to use that also as an opportunity to chat it out with our, uh, Youth Commission. I'm excited, they're asking questions.
Yeah, and so, um, we will be coming back to this as just, just the first reader, all right? We have a second reader, the petitioner, Robert McCorkle. Request zoning, uh, rezoning of the subject parcel at two oh nine Shipyard Road from R dash one slash E O, One Family Residential to B dash one slash E O Business Limited for the purpose of bringing a non-conforming landscaping business into zoning compliance. M P C file number Z dash zero eight two five dash zero 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 five seven three, PIN one zero five one seven zero two zero one five. The M P C recommends alternative approval. All right, District One. Now, let me, um, since this is rezoning, it recalls for us to open the public hearing, all right? Is there anyone in here besides the petitioner, besides M P C or besides the commission who want to speak on this, on this issue? All right, let me have a, let me have a quick open the public hearing. Proper motion is second, that the public hearing be open. Are you ready for the question? Please cast your votes. All right, thank you, the public hearing is open. Is there anyone who want to speak during the public hearing? Is there anyone who want to speak during the public hearing? Is there anyone who want to speak during the public hearing? You want to speak during the public hearing? You want to speak when we get to, because we're going to get to you.
I'm the petitioner, I'll do it however you want.
Okay, all right, all right, good, good, because we don't, all right? So let me have a motion to close the public hearing. Proper motion is second, that we close the public hearing. Are you ready for the question? Please cast your votes, everybody cast your votes. All right, thank you. Now, let's go to the petition itself. Now, Mr. McCorkle, we, we want to, let us hear from M P C first, all right? Yeah, let's do this. Let's hear from M P C first, and then we'll bring up the petitioner.
Good morning, Chairman Ellis.
Morning.
Uh, members of the Chatham County Commission. I am Edward Morrow from the M P C.
Speak up.
Oh, sorry, thought I was talking into the mic. Uh, I am Edward Morrow from the Planning Commission. Uh, I'd like to enter the staff report into the record. Uh, and if it pleases the commission, I have a few, uh, brief comments about this. Uh, so as the chairman identified, this is a request to rezone, uh, what is a single-family residential parcel for a business use. Uh, it's currently non-conforming. You can see the parcel on your screen outlined in yellow. Uh, it's south of Shipyard Road. This is near the intersection of Shipyard and Ferguson. Uh, this is an area that is, uh, mixed in character, residential, commercial, with a lot of longstanding nonconformity. And so, uh, this commission has actually seen two rezonings associated with bringing, uh, businesses that were out of compliance, uh, with zoning into compliance currently. Those were on the north side, uh, if you recall, and this petitioner has requested to do something similar. Uh, but the context is just a little bit different. So just to offer you a brief look at the future land use map, uh, that light yellow color that you see shows that this parcel, uh, is indicated for a relatively low-density, single-family residential use at present. Uh, this, the parcel is about twenty thousand square feet, a hundred feet wide, two hundred feet deep. Uh, and so it's subdivided for a single-family home, but it's currently operating as a landscaping business. Uh, on the north side, again, you can see some of those longstanding, uh, commercial uses. There's also, I believe, a fire station that's just across the street, so, uh, slightly different context. Also, to look at the zoning map, you can see that this is a single-family residential zoning uh, that surrounds this property on this side of the street. Uh, you can see a photo here of the subject property and how it currently operates with what appears to be, um, a mobile structure that's not a principal structure for this zoning district, uh, with some outside storage and a fence. I'll allow Mr. McCorkle to speak more, uh, about the specifics of it. But, uh, just to offer you, uh, a basis for the alternative recommendation, the current zoning is single-family, and what's being proposed is a business district that would permit some things that, based on the character, uh, the current zoning and the subdivision of the parcel would be, uh, unsuitable for this particular site. Uh, you can see some of those used to, uses listed on the right-hand side of your screen. Uh, it would require an intensity of development, or permit, rather, an intensity of development that would be uncharacteristic and inconsistent with this area. And so that's why, uh, staff in the planning commission have gone a different direction. This is the conceptual plan that the petitioner has offered, uh, to bring this particular site up into, uh, conformance with, uh, kind of the characteristic of this district, with a principal, uh, building that would be situated at the center of the lot, uh, some, uh, employee parking here. Uh, there's also a proposed, uh, bin here that would be established for trash. But, uh, as you know, a landscaping business requires some, uh, significant, uh, outdoor storage, and so that's not reflected here. I'll also allow Mr. McCorkle to speak to, uh, the petitioner's plans there. But with that, the planning commission has recommended denial of the request, but approval of an alternative for P D N, uh, in the Environmental Overlay District. And the P D N district is a district for non-conforming uses. Uh, the intent here would be to allow this use to continue to run, uh, with some improvements to make it, uh, more so a conforming business, uh, but so that we would not open the door to other uses that would not be appropriate within this area. Uh, and so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have.
So now, my first question to you is, you say non-conforming landscaping?
Yes, sir.
Explain non-conforming landscaping.
Uh, so there are certain non-residential uses that are permitted in residential zoning districts. We usually see churches and schools and things of that nature. Uh, a, a landscaping business that would require, um, outdoor storage of lawn equipment or piles of, uh, you know, mulch or other things that you would use, would not be one of those businesses. And so because this petitioner is running one of those, uh, without, you know, an appropriate zoning remedy, they are regarded as non-conforming.
All right, my second question is, rather than asking us to pass what the petitioner is requesting, you asking us to deny it and go to an alternative, right? And, uh, what's the difference between the two?
Uh, so the first one would be a zoning district that would permit a variety of businesses. Uh, the subject parcel has, uh, residential zoning on either side, even though there are not established residences on those parcels. And so because of that, uh, there would be a scale and intensity of potential development on these parcels that wouldn't necessarily lend itself to the zoning that someone else would have. So imagine the scenario, you purchase one of these residential parcels, you come in, uh, the law says you can only build a home, but you've got a business next door. So in essence, it makes this particular property, uh, able to devalue the, the use for which those parcels are presently zoned. And so the remedy, uh, that we are recommending instead would only permit this particular use to, to come into conformance, uh, to do things like make improvement, pull permits for building a proper- a proper principal structure, establish areas for parking, establish areas for outdoor storage, without opening the door to any other uses that would typically be permitted in a business designation. So it would only be this specific use that would be permitted.
All right, any other commissioner have a question? All right, Commissioner, kick light on.
Mr. Chairman, how long have the business, how long has the business been located there?
That may be a better question for the petitioner or Mr. Lotson.
Okay.
Where Mr. Lotson go? Did he leave? How long has this been, this been in, how long have they been in business, is what he's asking?
We became, Building Safety became aware of this particular business just this year. However, this property has been operated as a, a similar business for a number of years.
Okay, is that more than three?
Certainly, yes, yes.
All right.
More than five?
Did the property recently change hands? Was it sold or something?
Yeah, I have to ask the owner, the current owner, to tell you how long they've owned it.
Okay. The petitioner is, no, I'm coming. Commissioner White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So did, was there at the hearing, this would be for Mr. Morrow, thank you, Mr. Lotson, was there any opposition expressed by the adjacent property owners?
No, sir. I don't believe we had anyone who spoke either in support or opposition.
Okay. Now, when it comes to the proposed zoning that you're, you're proposing in lieu of the original request, if we were to put that same zoning, let's just say, five years from now, one of the adjacent properties asked to do the same thing, you know, does that kind of, what does that, what kind of ramifications does that have, just for example, on that roadway? Is that, that's not, is that a collector's street or what?
It is probably functioning above its functional classification simply because of the nature of the traffic there, but a future owner of property coming in to request zoning, it wouldn't be appropriate to ask for a non-conforming zoning district, simply because this is for things that have been there for some time, and this board deems it appropriate that that use would be allowed to continue to exist in its current form. So in the future, and as you recall, our executive director was here not long ago to speak about the comprehensive plan, and looking at the zoning and looking at the future land use of this area, it would make sense to reconsider, you know, perhaps if this is becoming a small business corridor of some sort, to actually, for this board to adopt a new zoning designation that may be appropriate for these parcels so that the request you described wouldn't be necessary.
Okay, and then so, and this is District One. Okay, thank you, that was all I had.
Did you have a question?
Yes, my question is gonna be very similar to that because why all of a sudden we, we want to change it if it's been there for those many years?
It's my understanding there's been an increase in enforcement activity, there may have been some nuisances that prompted, you know, some calls that now, you know, mean that the county was forced to take action on this. It is generally a good habit, though, to ensure that you've got land uses that are consistent with your regulatory scheme, so.
I think let Mr. Lotson come so he can give him a better explanation as to why now.
Commissioner Lockett, the reason this came before you now is because the, the property owner was cited for a violation because they were operating a business in the non, in the residential zoning classification. When they were cited, one of the remedies that they were given was the option to seek rezoning. So they're coming before you now to request that.
All right, I got everybody? Got everybody? All right. Mr. McCorkle?
Morning.
Good morning.
Any chance I can use this to show you all some of the pictures?
Sure, sure.
I think it'll be helpful.
Uh, um.
And I'm not gonna, somebody's gonna have to turn it on for me.
Staff come up here?
Yeah, they, they're back in the control room.
I'll give it a shot.
Okay.
All right. Well, he's doing that, appreciate it, Mr. Chairman. Robert McCorkle here on behalf of the petitioner Heather and Ike Wright, who are the owners of Delagall Landscapes. They've operated on this site for seven years, to answer the question, that since 2018, and I may have to turn that thing around, I don't know, but, and so, as was mentioned by staff, the require, the request here is to allow them to continue to operate and to also, to invest in the area and improve the property by adding a brand-new building, which will allow, which will allow them to, to have an office on the site, and again, a nice, a nice beautiful building. I'll show you a picture here in a second. We did rezone the property last year directly across the street for the same use. The same thing happened because, if you're familiar, I live on Burnside, I drive by this twice a day, every day of my life, and this area of Shipyard is very much, it's not really a residential area, it's a mixed-use area, there's a lot of commercial uses, and there has been some enforcement action that has taken place because of rezonings that have occurred in the area where they've kind of gone around to a lot of these landscaping and other businesses that have been operating in this area for a long time that may not have had business licenses, and so this is one of the ones that came up. The one difference between this and the one across the street is, is the property around us is in fact zone R1, but as I mentioned, it's a mix of commercial uses, and I'll kind of show you here on this map, all of this property in pink is zone commercial already, okay? This is our site here, this is a church site behind us. If you come off of Whitfield here, this is Whitfield to Ferguson. Up here, you've got a shopping center that has a little gas station in it, a liquor store, and some other commercial uses. Next to that, you've got the Savannah Auto Works, which is an auto body shop, which operates right up here. And then you've got landscaping businesses and other commercial uses across the street, you have a fire station, and then down here, you've actually got Kirby Sanitation, which runs this entire garbage operation out of that site on our side of the street. And so every morning, all of their garbage trucks come out from that site and come back in the daytime. This is the old Durst, there's an old Durst bread place here in a little park, but it's important to note that as you come down between Whitfield and Ferguson, this entire length, there are actually only two residences total. Our property has, like I said, a church behind us, a landscaping business across the street, we have an empty lot on one side, we have an empty lot, wooded, wooded lots on both sides of us, so we have no direct neighbors. This is a picture of the site, and I wanted to show this just because it's a little more overt than the one, we spoke with Mr. Noe about this a while back, he wanted to make sure landscaping was covered in the front, you can see now the hedges that are in front of the property now are 10 feet tall. So when you drive by the front of the property, that's what it looks like from the road with a single point of entry. This is just a picture of the lot that's next door to us. This is a picture of the closest residence to us, which is one lot over from the empty lot that's next to us, which has been in that state for some period of time. This is the house that's next to that, which is also, I believe, in a condemned state as you continue to go towards Ferguson on our side of the street. And so then you've got two residences. Also up in the corner, there's a small little commercial, it's really someone's private office that they use on the site, which is our closest neighbor is this, which is not a residence at all. And so I show those photos just to give some context to the fact that even though it is R1 on our side of the road, there are only two residences, and one of the two residences is actually already zone commercial. It just happens to be a residence that's in a commercial zone. And so what we want to do here is continue to run our landscaping business. We originally applied for B1 because that's what we did across the street, that's what the commission approved across the street, so we just applied for the same zone. Staff, to staff's credit, they looked at it and said, "Look, we think when you're here, you should do this as a PD district so that you are tied to a site plan." The good thing about that is, what you see here in this picture is what you're gonna get. We're going to, we would like to construct a building that can be used for their business, that'll have an office on the liquor store, it could also be converted back to residential one day if this area were to ever come back as residential. But as mentioned, there are empty lots and undeveloped lots and houses that are basically condemned, and there haven't been any new residences built in this area for a really long time. And so by tying it to this, we can't change anything we're doing on the site without coming back here to County Commission. And so the use that we're saying we're gonna do is exactly what it is. There are only two crews that run out of this facility. They leave between seven and eight in the morning, they come back between four and five in the afternoon, two crews, no large trucks, these are pickup trucks with trailers behind them. We are gonna put, we're gonna have a dumpster on the site to hold all the yard debris so there will not be any piles of loose materials out there. The storage of anything will be either under the building or in the rear of the building. They're also gonna construct a privacy fence around the entire property and put a gate in the front in between those 10-foot hedges that you saw from the beginning. And so we think we've kind of done everything to make sure this isn't detrimental to any neighbors, even though we do not have any neighbors on any direct side of us. And again, to change anything from this plan to add a building, to, to do anything else, we would have to come back and get an amendment. And so everyone can feel comfortable, including the neighbors, which is perhaps why we don't have any objection, that this is all, this is what it's gonna be. And so we ended up with unanimous recommendation from the MPC, they did request the PD district, we agreed to that request, that's fine with us, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions as you all ask.
All right.
Having heard that, and with your permission, I'll make a motion to approve alternative approval here.
I'll second.
All right, so probably motion in second that we agree to the alternative.
Great description of the area.
All right.
I live there.
All right, question.
Great place to live.
Commissioner White has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, I get, and this would more so be for staff, so when was the last time this road was resurfaced, Shipyard? And the reason I'm asking is I'm thinking long-term, if this area looks like it's gonna potentially shift to commercial, then we, I just wonder if we have it on a list, a future list for any type of upgrades.
We'd have to have engineering down here.
Yeah.
Yeah. We'd have to have engineering to tell us if it's on, if it's on the list of improvements.
Okay, well, well, more, to be more general, just since they're not here, do you know of, of any type of, of Shipyard Road being in any type of long-range infrastructure plan that we have?
Now, the answer to that is, yes, they are doing some, because they're gonna become some, even the other day when we were at the island's community meeting, or, or association meeting, there was a mention, and that's all in that same area, right? But we would have to get engineering to tell you exactly what those, what those changes are, future changes are.
Yes, sir. Well, with that, I, I'll just say, you know, I, I am all for property rights, and I think that these folks have done a good job to fit into the situation that's, that's at hand, so I appreciate that. I just, for us as a commission, want us to be mindful that as it, I mean, there's, it's already commercially zoned for, you know, around there, so I just want to make sure that our staff has on the radar that there may be a need for significant upgrades because of the commercial usage, and I'm assuming that this road was probably built for residential usage, so I just wanna.
All right.
Yeah, back in the days.
All right, Commissioner.
Just to comment, I think it's quite an approval.
No, no, Commissioner Hards.
Oh, I'm sorry, you appointed me, that's why I did that.
Commissioner Hards.
Thank you, Chairman. I did have a question about the, what we're adopting now, that's the MPC recommendation that he shared, okay.
That they've agreed upon. Okay, now.
That's pretty well what I was saying.
Okay, yeah, they come, yes, ma'am.
Engineering says Shipyard is on the resurfacing contract that we just let.
Yeah, I thought so. I thought, I thought, I thought in the meeting, that's what they told me.
Yes.
Something about some redoing of Shipyard because it runs right off the, off the thing right now.
I got you, thank you.